Andrew Struthers, Benton County Planning Commission and a Corvallis resident.
Evelyn Lee, I'm a Benton County Planning Commissioner and a resident of the Alpine Monroe area.
I'm John Wilson, I'm a Benton County Planning Commissioner and a member of the Dare Village Community.
Catherine Bisco, a member of the Benton County Planning Commission and resident of Willamette.
Ed Fullford, member of Benton County Planning Commission, representing Corvallis.
I need to make an announcement and make sure that everybody, the tape and top speaker mics, keep making sure that they're on green so that we can hear the audio. Broadcast is very large, so we want to be sure that.
And Greg, would you please announce yourself from Washington? You're on mute.
We'll get it. Okay. Greg Heeman, and I am a member of the Benton County Planning Commission.
And I didn't introduce myself earlier, I'm Nicholas Fowler, I'm the chairman of the Benton County Planning Commission. And our indispensable Amanda, could you introduce yourself?
I'm Amanda Makepeace, stories will be developed in the help at meetings for a few weeks.
Sarah is online.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it.
And Sarah's online.
Oh, okay. Sarah, could you please introduce yourself?
Sure thing, thank you, Commissioner. This is Sarah Cash, I am from the Alsey Community.
Excellent, I will observe that both the Corvallis Planning Commission and Benton County Planning Commission have valid quorum. We can proceed with the evening's activity. I'm going to call an audible and move the Benton County Minutes approval to the end of the agenda. Our joint session time is very valuable, so I want to get directly into the business at hand. So we'll move the approval of the minutes from our last meeting to the end of the agenda. For those who've never participated in a planning commission meeting before, I have a script that I need to read for the record. It sounds like it might be the fine print on a usage agreement for a piece of software, but it's actually important information. This is the time and place for the joint public hearing of the Benton County Planning Commission and the Corvallis Planning Commission in the matter of a comprehensive plan designation change and a zone change. Corvallis file CPA dash 2023 dash O2 and Benton County file LU dash two four dash zero zero six. The applicant, Willamette Valley Planning Incorporated, is requesting a comprehensive plan change from low-density residential to mixed-use commercial and a zone change from urban residential to urban commercial. The comprehensive plan change request is made of Corvallis and Benton County. The zone change request is directed to Benton County. The property is 2.87 acres and is located at 5840 Northwest Highway 99 West in the Corvallis urban fringe. This is a legislative hearing conducted pursuant to Benton County Development Code Sections 53.505 through 53.525 and Corvallis Land Development Code Section 2.1.30.06. All testimony, arguments, and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed toward the approval criteria or to such other rule, law, regulation, or policy that you believe to apply to this case. The applicant has the burden of proving that all of the relevant approval criteria have been met. The hearing procedure will be as follows. The staff planner will present the staff report. The applicant will then present its case, testimony from those in favor of the application, testimony from persons opposed to the application, testimony from any representative of any other governmental body, and rebuttal by the applicant. If there is no request for a continuance, no request to hold the record open, and no request to submit written argument by the applicant, the public testimony portion of the hearing will be closed, the record will be closed, and the two planning commissions will deliberate and make recommendations to their respective governing bodies. Because this is a legislative land use hearing, neither planning commission will make any decisions, just recommendations. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else already has expressed the same thoughts. It is perfectly acceptable to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must be formally placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please leave the material with the recorder. That's Ms. Makepeace, who will make sure your evidence is properly taken care of. So we will now begin with the staff report and the floor is yours.
Good evening, my name is Ryan Ametson, Senior Planner with the City Corvallis Planning Division. I'm going to take you through a summary of the staff report related to the comprehensive plan amendment piece of the combined application. I believe I have a presentation that will have to be conducted remotely because I haven't been able to connect directly my computer to the screen. Just hold on a second.
No problem.
Yeah, no, no worries. I can go in if we don't go full screen, I think that's all right. So this is, as the chair mentioned, Corvallis case CPA 2023 O2. So just overview of the agenda for this presentation, let me give a overview of the application and the site. Review the review process and the review criteria and an overview of the staff evaluation recommendation. All right, next slide. So the application overview, the location is 5840 Northwest Highway 99 West. This is in the Corvallis urban fringe between the city limits and the outer limits of the urban growth boundary. Approximately 1.7 miles north of the existing city limits. It's also located in a major neighborhood center on the comprehensive plan map. The kind of purple circle that you see there is a quarter-mile radius from a point that's located on the south side of Lewisburg Avenue. The request specifically is to change the comprehensive map designation on the property from low-density residential to mixed-use commercial. The request affects about 2.78 acres of the property's 2.87 acres. There's a small portion of the property that's already designated mixed-use commercial in the southwest portion of the site. This is concurrent with the Benton County Zone Change Request that you're going to hear after this to change the Benton County zoning from urban residential to urban commercial. To date, we've received no testimony on the comprehensive plan amendment request. Zooming into the site itself a little bit, the site contains an existing storage building, two wellhouses, vehicle storage, wood storage, piles of wood chips, all used by a tree service company. To the south is commercial development. Immediately to the south is a narrow strip, narrow property that's also owned by the property owner that contains a couple of buildings. And then just to the south of that, at the corner of Lewisburg Avenue and the highway, is a convenience store and gas station. To the west and the north is low-density residential development. The nearest residence to the property is over 100 feet away. Also to the north is High Protection Repairing Corridor, associated with a creek. Corvallis and Benton County have an agreement called the Urban Fringe Management Agreement that guides us when it comes to applications in the urban fringe, land use applications. And it sort of outlines the process and the criteria that we're expected to apply to the case. This has been rarely invoked as far as comprehensive plan amendments. I don't think we have a recorded case of a comprehensive plan amendment of this type where it's a discrete property. So kind of new territory for us. So the process for quasi judicial or comprehensive plan amendment applications in the urban fringe, according to CUFMA, is a joint public hearing with the Corvallis and Benton County Planning Commissions, which is what we're doing tonight. It says that the planning commissions can deliberate together separately and then make recommendations to their respective governing bodies. And then after that hearing is concluded and the recommendations are made, then there'll be a separate joint hearing between the Corvallis City Council and the Benton County Board of Commissioners who make the final decision on the comprehensive plan amendment. And then as far as review criteria for comprehensive plan amendment applications, per the CUFMA, it says that we need to utilize provisions of the CUFMA, the Corvallis Comprehensive Plan as amended and the Benton County Comprehensive Plan as amended. The CUFMA itself doesn't include any specific review criteria. The Corvallis Land Development Code that we normally refer to with cop plan amendments, specifically Section 2.1.30.06, would apply to this. So I'll guide you through those review criteria. That incorporates Corvallis comprehensive plan policies. And then the Benton County Comprehensive Plan references a document called the Benton County Comprehensive Plan for the urban fringe, which effectively incorporates applicable Corvallis comprehensive plan policies. And so there's no need for a separate review of that because we're already doing a review of Corvallis comprehensive plan policies. So that leads us to the standard Corvallis cop plan review criteria in 2.1.30.06 of our land development code. And that guides us to do an evaluation of statewide planning goals, comprehensive plan policies. And then we need to make a finding that there's a demonstrated need for the change, the advantages outweigh the disadvantages, and the change is a desirable means for meeting the public need. There are specific compatibility criteria. And then we need to look at OAR 660 012 060, otherwise known as the transportation planning rule. And I'll kind of whiz through those fairly quickly. In terms of statewide planning goals, there's four that are particularly applicable. Assistant involvement, land use planning, economic development, and housing. In terms of citizen involvement, there are notice requirements that we've fulfilled. A notice to the State Department of Land Conservation Development. Pre-notification that we issue to nearby residents, and then the public hearing notice that's issued 20 days in advance. In terms of land use planning, we have an established process for reviewing cop plan amendment requests, both in the land development code, in this case, also the CUFMA, the urban fringe management agreement. In terms of economic development, I'll get into more detail in this in a minute, but per our most recent Billable Lands Inventory, there's a demonstrated deficit of mixed-use commercial land in the urban growth boundary. In terms of housing, per the BLI, there's a demonstrated surplus of low-density residential in the UGB. Next criteria is looking at our comprehensive plan policies. We identified a number of them in the staff report that are applicable to the application. Cop plan policy 3.2.7 guides us to evaluate the compatibility of land uses. Those factors are incorporated into the review criteria later on. Cop plan policy 8.2.1 and 8.2.3 lead us to support a range of employment uses. In this case, the change sanctions an existing use and provides opportunities for additional commercial uses on the site. Plan policy 8.10.1 says evaluate the need for commercial activities. That's incorporated into the review criteria addressing the public need for the change, advantages and disadvantages, and that the change is the desirable means to satisfy the need. Cop plan 8.10.2 preserve existing commercial activities. The change again will help prevent the decline of an existing commercial use by sanctioning its use. Cop plan 9.2.5 talks about neighborhood characteristics. And we found that the future development will comply with development standards that implement that policy. So we have a number of development standards already adopted that implement neighborhood characteristic guidance. Okay, demonstrate need for the change. Again, the BLI that was adopted in 2016 evaluated the need for various land use types over the 20-year planning period and found that there's a deficit of 54 acres of mixed-use commercial land over that 20-year period. That deficit has not been addressed, so in the intervening years, there have been no cop plan amendment applications to convert a land use from one type to mixed-use commercial. And then in terms of low-density residential, the BLI found that there's a pretty good surplus of low-density residential land in the urban growth boundary. There had been some cop plan amendments in the intervening years, but still we have a surplus of over 2, 2,900 units worth of low-density residential land in the UGB. So in summary, there's an abundant supply of low-density residential still, and it's still a deficit of mixed-use commercial. In terms of the advantages and disadvantages, and that the change is a desirable means, the request addresses a deficit of mixed-use commercial without threatening to cause a deficit of other land use categories. Specifically to this subject site, it has a long history of being used for commercial activities. It has frontage only on Highway 99W, which is an arterial highway. It butts mixed-use commercial land to the south extending to a major signalized intersection at Lewisburg Avenue. And it's entirely within a major neighborhood center circle in the comprehensive plan map. And those are areas that we've identified throughout the urban growth boundary as particularly suitable for higher density nodes of higher density commercial uses tapering down to residential as you extend away from those centers. Those are located at major intersections throughout the urban growth boundary. All right, in terms of the compatibility criteria, we have these 13 compatibility criteria that we apply to all of our discretionary land use decisions. There's a lot of information on this slide, but they're very site-specific primarily. There's no development being proposed with this application, so these criteria are evaluated more generally in terms of the potential development that could result from approval from the perspective of future development in accordance with city zoning, if and when the property is ever annexed into the city. Staff reminds commissioners that the subject site is currently more than a mile and a half from the current city limits. Given the slow historic pace of annexations in the area, in this area of urban fringe, and the topographical challenges of extending city services to this area, it's likely to be sometime before the property is annexed into the city and requires a city zoning designation. So any development in the short term is much more likely to be subject to county zoning standards than to city zoning. Regarding criteria 1 through 7 on the screen here, there are three different city zoning designations that implement the mixed-use commercial comprehensive plan designation. Those are general commercial, commercial mixed-use 1, and commercial mixed-use 2. Of these, the general commercial zone, or GC zone, is the least intensive in terms of potential building mass. It is actually relatively comparable to the R6 zone, which would be applied under the current cop plan designation. The biggest difference between the GC zone and the R6 zone is probably that the R6 has a 60% lot coverage maximum, and there's no lot coverage maximum in the GC zone. The precise city zoning will be determined upon annexation after additional public hearings that evaluate which is the appropriate zone for the site. Regarding criteria 8 through 10, the city does not have transportation facilities in proximity to the site. Again, we're over a mile and a half from city limits. The site has frontage along Highway 99, which is an ODOT facility. The applicant provided a traffic impact study, including what's referred to as a reasonable worst-case scenario trip generation estimate, assuming the most intensive possible city zoning designation, which is CMU 2. Any traffic impacts would be to ODOT's facility. ODOT was involved in the review and did not express any concern about the application. In terms of utilities, the property has well in septic currently, and if and when it's annexed, the property will need to address city services consistent with current master plans. Regarding criteria 11 through 13, development associated with the mixed-use commercial designation is not typically associated with air and quality, air and water quality impacts. Future development will need to be consistent with the city's pedestrian oriented design standards and requirements related to natural hazards and natural resources. So in summary, staff finds the application is consistent with these compatibility criteria. In terms of the transportation planning rule, per the traffic impact study, the increase in trips falls below the threshold for requiring a TPR analysis. This will be reevaluated if and when the property is ever annexed into the city and a city zoning designation is applied to the site. All right, so in summary, the request complies, the staff finds that the request complies with applicable statewide planning goals, Corvallis cop plan policies, and the Benton County Comprehensive Plan provisions. There's an abundance of low-density residential land and a shortage of mixed-use commercial. The subject site provides a suitable location for development consistent with mixed-use commercial. Staff finds that all approval criteria are satisfied, and we note that Benton County staff also supports the request as documented in attachment PCC of the Corvallis staff report. That recommends that the commissions forward recommendations to approve the request.
Does any member of either commission have a question on this staff report? Yes, Ms. Mayors.
My question is, at the beginning, Chair Fowler, you said it was a legislative decision, and Ryan has been saying it's a quasi judicial decision, so I'm a little confused.
So I believe our role is legislative because we are offering a recommendation to our respective governing bodies.
Okay.
Would you want to clarify?
The application, because it's a discrete property, according to land, the Corvallis Land Development Code follows what we would consider to be a quasi judicial process. In terms of hearing procedures, I'm not sure, it might be a semantic distinction whether we're calling it legislative or quasi judicial, because at this point, the same is with the county. The city is just making a recommendation, and the city council is going to make the final.
Well, it is legislative, I mean, it's a quasi judicial, this is a discretionary action that occurs here, but the umbrella action is legislative, so the quasi judicial component is underneath. So generally, we describe that then as overall legislative.
I expect clarification. Chair Fowler, thank you. The question I have is really just a general question. Where, because I'm looking at that first map in the packet, where does the Corvallis urban fringe reach to? How far does that reach? I mean, I know, because I live in the Dare Village area, that I know that Corvallis has a fire station on Lewisburg, or, you know, on Lewisburg Road, and then, so I assume it at least goes that far. I just didn't know how much further past what the city considers its urban fringe boundary.
Right, good question, and I almost included a map, zooming out even further to show the extent.
Sure.
So on that map that you're referring to, you can actually see the edge of the urban fringe at the north where the color ends. So it's probably less than a quarter mile. I'd say a tenth of a mile to the north of the subject property.
So on the map, it's that, and Commissioner Struthers pointed this out, is that the map is colored in this kind of light yellow up to the top, and so that's considered the Corvallis urban fringe.
Right, the color represents the comprehensive plan designations which extend to the edge of the urban fringe.
Okay, yeah, great, thank you.
Other questions? I did have one question, it seems. You observed that there is a deficit of commercial in the urban fringe. This action appears to be initiated by the landowner. Is there any proactive activity in the city to advance these changes prior to a request from a landowner?
Yeah, so we can address those with, so in the near term, when we adopted the buildable lands inventory, the state made us address our deficit of high-density residential to meet our needed housing needs. But the state didn't require us to address other deficits that are identified in the BLI. But with area plans, we can proactively begin to address those. And Sarah's going to talk about an area plan later in this meeting, which is one opportunity for us to take advantage of that. One opportunity for us to actually begin to address the deficit of MUC beyond discrete property owners making applications.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Just a little housekeeping problem here on page 1277. The subject property, item number 16, the acreage of the property and the proposed changes are different there than they are in any other location in this document. So I just wanted to point that out as housekeeping.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wilson, do you have another question?
It'll come to me in a minute.
I've got a question regarding any deviations from the mixed-use commercial that this land would property get, any deviations from that zone? property get, any deviations from that zone? You know, from the residential to the mixed use commercial, is it missing anything?
In terms of the current uses, sectioning the current uses, so the zone, what what this application is doing is changing the underlying comprehensive plan designation, it doesn't change the zoning. The zoning will be the next piece that Toby talks about in a minute, and our understanding is that the zone that they're requesting is most compatible with a mixed use commercial. And allows the continued use of the the property as it has been. And so it's the most suitable zone for the property, and it also complies with the cop plan map designation that's being requested here. Does that answer the question? Okay.
Any other questions? It came to me again, thank you, Chair. In line of the question about the mixed use commercial deficit, so absent any applications by landowners to this point, the city is not obligated to make reconsiderations in terms of designating additional lands as mixed use commercial.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It's it's good practice to, whenever we can, attempt to address it, but we haven't had a specific project, long range project to that effect. Commissioner Bisco.
Thank you, Chair Fowler, I just have a question, so Corvallis, just making sure that I'm clear, it's a point of clarification, I guess. When we talk about demonstrating public need for the change, what I'm hearing is that we have this deficiency of the mixed use commercial property. Is that what we're aligning with the demonstrated public need for the change, or is there other components that lead into that demonstrated need for public, demonstrated public need for change?
Yeah, that that was the primary basis for finding that the application satisfies that particular criteria is the evaluation of the buildable lands inventory, deficit of M U C and surplus of low density residential. So addressing a deficit without threatening to cause a new deficit in a different land use type.
And so it sounds like the only demonstrated public need for the change is to address that deficit without causing that loss, correct?
That's the primary one that staff evaluated, the commissions can add findings or you know, in their deliberations, you could you could add findings to that, so.
Maybe to tag on to Commissioner Bisco's question, is the is the current use of the property more consistent with the zone and comprehensive plan change? Is that also an impetus for this?
Correct, yeah, that's our understanding is that the property owner has been looking for some time to officially sanction the the long use of this site, it's been used as a tree service company for many years, and this finally brings it into compliance with the land use designations.
You alluded to this well in your presentation, and it's in the it's in our packet as well, but should Corvallis eventually make a move to annex up to and including that area of the urban growth boundary, that the property owner, this particular property owner and others, would have new criteria to meet with regards to the Corvallis City Planning Code. And I think you kind of alluded to that, does the property owner, or does this particular property owner know what those might be, or do they not anticipate being there at that point, because it couldn't, it could be many, many years or decades before that happens, but.
Right, I'll defer to the applicant to speak to what they do or don't know. But yes, when the if and when it becomes, there's an annexation application, and typically, it's the property owners themselves that request annexation, we don't proactively.
Sure.
Historically, have not proactively annexed property. Then the evaluation is, can the site be served with city services? If it can't, can we come to some kind of agreement for making sure that that happens? And what's the most appropriate zoning designation for that property? Sometimes it's a cut and dry choice, there's only one zoning designation that implements that cop plan designation, sometimes there's multiple, in this case, if with the case of mixed use commercial, there's three designations that implement that cop plan designation. And so there'd be a discussion at that time, which is the most appropriate of the three in this case.
Thanks. Commissioner Bisco.
Thank you, Chair Fowler. I'm just going to point to page thirty eight of the packet, we were talking about public dis. In just hearing this this presentation, but also recognizing that there are not nearby services from the city generally accepted in this space is available. Or at least maybe with some cost provisions. Underwater on H thirty eight, it does talk about a contamination plume that is near to but not extending to this property. If we are to move to this new designation and officially sanction the commercial uses that are occurring on this property through this action. Is there, I I don't know that I have a question specifically, but that's a red flag for me, so we have commercial activities occurring already in a non sanctioned officially zone property. But we also have an unknown variable as far as availability of water or potential contamination of water in the instance that that occurs in a property that we've now given permission fully with its designation. If that occurs, what are our remedies, and is that a risk that we should be talking about further at this juncture?
Is that a zoning?
Well. So the the contamination plume was documented on, so this is, page thirty eight is part of the applicant's narrative that was submitted. That contamination plume was something that we asked for additional documentation on, and in the the links on the county website that include both the initial application and then the additional application materials that were submitted, so that additional application material submitted has more documentation on that plume. It's an existing situation right now that would have to be developed, dealt with if there's any development that might be impacted by it, regardless of the zone. So if it stays with the current zone designations, current comprehensive plan map designation, any development that might be impacted by that would still have to deal with that. Does that help?
That's helpful, I guess, then for a point of clarification further, if we are to move forward with this action to change this zoning, is there any implied or even inferred approvals in that space that impact this water risk, I guess, is maybe the best way to say it. I know there's kind of nebulous a little bit, but the fact is, is it does exist here in this application, and we do have record of that. Is there any risk to us moving forward without looking at that closer, or is there any implication or inference that can come out of that space by approving this change?
As far, I'll defer to you on comprehensive plan map, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit on the zoning zoning change part. So the uses that are occurring on the property right now cover pretty much most of the property, as is shown in the many of the aerial photographs that were included in the staff report. The change to urban commercial zoning would allow those uses to continue to occur. And any redevelopment of the site would need to be evaluated with that in mind. If it if it looks like it might be impacted, I don't know of any potential risks to not requiring additional documentation at this point. Other thoughts on comprehensive plan map?
I don't see any other questions right now. Ms. Lewis, do you want to present the Benton County staff report?
Sure. Okay, so the Benton County file is for changing the current zone designation for the property from urban residential to urban commercial. As Ryan mentioned, the property is just north of Corvallis, it's northwest of the Lewisburg Avenue, highway ninety nine intersection, and the zone change criteria in Benton County's development code are fairly minimal. What we're looking for is, is the applicant's request to change the zoning to urban commercial more appropriate for this property than the current zone designation of urban residential? And things to consider in that are existing uses on the property, changes in circumstances since the zoning was applied to the property, impacts to adjacent properties, and making sure that that those would be minimal. And whether or not there's any increase in the level of public services that would be needed as a result of changing the zone designation to from residential to commercial. And then also, is the proposed zone change consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan? I'm going to start with that one, since Ryan already covered that. The comprehensive plan evaluation has been done by the city per the Corvallis Urban Fringe Management Agreement, because it is the city's comprehensive plan that applies to this property, so going back to what what zone designation is most appropriate for this property, it has been used in a commercial fashion for many years, the prior to the property being used as a tree care business, related business. It was used at some point as the Lewisburg auction. Yeah, Lewisburg auction, I can check out the name right, and that use was determined to be a nonconforming use, meaning that it was in existence before the property, before zoning was applied to the property, that use was ceased sometime around early two thousands, maybe two thousand and one. There was a lapse of more than one year before, between, at some point between two thousand and one and and when the property was purchased by Buena Vista Arbor Care, and so that nonconforming use status appears to have ceased. There wasn't a good record of exact, there were a couple businesses in there, I think, between two thousand and one and twenty fifteen sixteen. And we don't have a good record of how long there was a lapse between business types operating off the property. In two thousand and twenty, the current property owners applied for an interpretation about to identify whether or not a tree care business would be an appropriate use or an allowed use in the urban commercial zone. And the decision on that was that that type of use is most suitable for the urban commercial zone. The tree care business was already operating on the property at that time, and there continues to be a tree care business. It's it's now a different one, but it's still a tree care business that's operating off the property, so we have the twenty two thousand and twenty planning official interpretation that the urban commercial zone is the most appropriate zone designation for that type of use. And we have the longstanding history of the property being used for commercial purposes, there's no dwelling on the property at the time currently, or as far as I know in the past, so it hasn't been used for residential purposes. So as far as that that initial criteria of which which zone designation is most appropriate, I think we have fairly clear demonstration that the urban commercial zone is a more appropriate zone designation for this property than urban residential. As far as impact on adjacent properties and making sure that those will be minimal, the longstanding use of this property for commercial purposes has there isn't really a proposed change. The plan is to continue using the property this way, it's been used as a commercial property, we're just aligning the zone designation with that. Prior prior to today, we've got an aerial photograph on page sixty one of seventy seven in our packet of what the Lewisburg Auction Yard looked like at that time, prior to a cleanup that was done of the site, so you can see there's a lot of material being stored on the site in ninety seven, that's since been cleaned up, there's a twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen photograph in there to show how how much cleanup was done over the years. And to my knowledge, we haven't received at the county any complaints about current uses occurring on the property. If anything, it appears that over the years, the impacts to neighboring properties, uses on neighboring properties may have decreased due to the cleanup of the site. The next criteria is the to ensure that any significant increase in the level of public services, which would be demanded as a result of the proposed zone change, can be made can be made available to the area. Again, we're not proposing, the applicant isn't proposing to implement a new commercial use of the property, they're just asking to make the zone designation for the property consistent with the way the property has been used for years. So there there aren't any expected significant increases in the level of public services that would be needed. The remaining criteria for a zone change are basically procedural criteria, so was the zone change properly initiated? Yes, the applicant submitted an application, we reviewed it for completeness, it was deemed complete. So that was a proper initiation of the zone change. The next one is that the planning commission needs to conduct a public hearing, we're here today conducting a public hearing. And the third step will be a board of commissioners' public hearing as well, which will be scheduled upon recommendation from the planning commission.
Questions for Ms. Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Chair. In reviewing our the county planning commission packet, and thank you for the presentation. I'm kind of curious, related back to Commissioner Bisco's question about that water or the potential contamination plume. That picture of the Lewisburg auction shows a lot of stuff on that property. How much of that stuff might have contaminated the land that we might be aware of? I don't, I don't know.
That's a a good question, I don't know the answer to it, I do know that it was flagged as a cleanup site. There were, there were a lot of materials on the site, and there was a concern of contamination, which is what triggered that mandatory cleanup of the property.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, oh.
There's a question in the chat.
From Commissioner Hayman or Commissioner Cash?
No, it's from a member of the public.
I'm sorry, we can't accommodate questions directly to the the staff report. Questions from either commission? Seeing none, thank you both for your presentations, and I'll remind the commissioners at the very end, we can ask questions of anybody, so if something comes up in your your mind in the interim, both will, both planners will be available to to answer. Is there a representative of the applicant that would wish to to address?
Is that a speaker? Good for Joe. Okay, great. My name is, good evening, members of the planning commission, both city and county planning commission. My name is David Dodson, I have a company called Land Valley Planning, I do planning consulting. And with me this evening is Vern and Priscilla Estwood, who are the property owners. They purchased this property from the county, when I believe it was foreclosed on, I think it was Larry Leslie who had the auction yard, for those of you who've been around long enough, remember, I actually bought a few things up there years ago. Anyways, Vern and Priscilla are the prior owners of Buena Vista Arbor Care. And now they own the former Lewisburg Auction and General Store property, and there's two properties. One is at fifty eight twenty and one is at fifty eight forty Northwest Highway ninety nine, so tonight, we're dealing with the one in the north, the northern parcel, which is a larger piece. The southern parcel is really the office building that they use for the Arbor Care work, and then there's another building behind that they use for maintenance and things like that. So although the larger two point eight seven acre property to the north has a long history of being used for commercial activity, the majority of the site is designated residential low density on the city's comprehensive plan map, as you know. The Estwins are interested in amending the city's comprehensive plan maps, so their entire property is designated mixed use commercial. For consistency with the county's land use designations, we're requesting a zone change from residential U R ten to urban commercial. The existing tree care company that resides on the property, which I think is Bartlett Tree Services, does intend to continue their current operations, so no changes to what exists on the site are anticipated. Based on the two thousand and sixteen buildable lands inventory, there is an abundance, and Ryan reiterated this, of low density residential land and a shortage of mixed use commercial land within the Corvallis Urban Growth Boundary. Not only will the proposed amendment address a need for additional mixed use commercial lands, but it also addresses an existing nonconforming use since the property is owned residential, but it's been used for commercial purpose for for nearly forty years. since the property is owned residential, but it's been used for commercial purpose for for nearly 40 years. Requested zone designation is more appropriate than the current zoning designation. The impact on adjacent properties as a result of the requested zone change will be minimal, and there will be no significant impact to public services. I would like to respond to a couple of questions that came up earlier that may be best addressed by either myself or the Estlins. One had to do with the well. And yes, there is a contamination plume that we think is probably close to the gas station to the south. And so it does extend north. There are two wells on the Estlin's property. They're using the one to the north because it's further from that plume. It's been tested and it's it's totally used for potability and the the plume has not reached that area. And so I think if if if, for whatever reason, if it ever did migrate further to that well, there's considerable land still further to the north and to the west where they could actually look at drilling another well that would probably be outside the plume if they needed to do that. And there was another question too about zoning, and the question was whether the Estlins had considered when the property will eventually annex into the city, that commercial designation is, would that be appropriate for what they they would be interested in doing? And I would say for now, yes, but in all likelihood, i- i- if that land will probably be won't be annexed in our lifetimes. And so and what commercial zones will be in place in 30-plus years? We have no idea, so we really don't know. But again, the intent of this request was really to bring, you know, a kind of a nonconforming situation into conformance, and it really makes the most sense, given the frontage on the highway. It doesn't make sense for low-density residential in this particular location, and its historical use for four years is kind of a more of a commercial-type property. So myself and Vernon, his wife, are available to answer any questions you might have this evening.
Well, just in your historical understanding of the property, did it's in, it's mixed, well, it's nonconforming commercial use. Did that, the Lewisburg Auction and whatever may have resided there before, did that predate the the county zoning designations that may have occurred at some point after they were, those businesses were started? Or do you think that they pre, that the, in other words, it's it's urban residential is the current zoning in the county. The city, of course, in its urban fringe has a different designation, but I guess my question is, did did these commercial activities exist before either the county or in the Corvallis River and Fringe, did they exist before they were designated urban residential or residential low density?
What I can tell you, in the staff report, there's a good kind of history about what the zoning was. And it it has typically been designated for residential use. However, there was a window of time where there were a few years where it was zoned for commercial or an industrial use. Then it got reverted back at some point to residential. So for the last decade or so, it has been designated for as residential.
So it was in that window, because that's what I was trying to glean from that. In that window, that's where that.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not really sure what happened.
Other questions for the applicant? You're very much appreciated.
Thank you.
I have no signups for testimony from either those in favor or those opposed. Do we have any representative of any other governmental body that wishes to provide testimony? I see none, and I'll just confirm, I assume that there is no rebuttal from the the applicant, since there's been no supplemental testimony?
That's correct. There's nothing to rebut, so.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission, the applicant or staff request a continuance or any reason to hold the record open? Commissioner Bisco?
Does that include questions?
I am sorry. Thanks. Thank you for that, that reminder. I'll call for, last call on questions prior to the close of the record. Commissioner Lee?
So on page 39 of 77 at the very top, it talks about for future development in the county within the urban commercial go zone. Reasonable worst-case development is assumed to be a 15,000 square foot general office building and a 10,000 square foot animal hospital veterinary clinic. And it goes on. Are those are those specific to this property, or is that general examples? Or what does that mean? Sorry, I didn't catch the page number. 39 of 77 at the very top. This is, I believe it's in a discussion of transportation.
It's like the second sentence for the future development in the county. And that's what I read it when I saw it.
Right. I just wanted to confirm that sort of like a general discussion, or is that specific to this property?
So that section of the the report, that's the applicant's medal? Yes?
Yes. It's under transfer, your discussion.
You might address how the worst-case scenario was developed?
I believe that as part of this, we had to do transportation analysis. And so what what the traffic or transportation engineer had to look at was what's considered to be a reasonable worst-case traffic impacts and what could eventually be built on this piece of property and what those impacts might be. So the 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 square footage and the uses of what we kind of assumed would be a possibility is what you're reading there. So it's nothing that's proposed now or anything like that. We had to kind of pick that because that's how the 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 city typically requires those analysis and even ODOT on their transportation facility, need to, they need to look at again, the reasonable worst case. So that's, that's why it's pretty, pretty large and pretty substantial compared to what's there today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bisco?
Thank you, Chair Fowler, again. So to clarify, that worst-case scenario is the outside limits of what potentially could be built on this property of the zone to the mixed-use commercial?
I would say the outside limits from a transportation perspective, yeah. So that would generate the the greatest amount of traffic, probably.
We have questions, but not of the applicant.
Now, now is the time.
So to the city of County, potentially maybe city. I just don't know your quote quite the same way. I'm curious. So this has been a nonconforming use for what I'm hearing up to 40 years. It's been used in a, I would say, a minimalistic sort of commercial use way with pretty minimal impacts and low visibility. Otherwise, what does mixed-use commercial allow for? And I think this is a Corvallis question. What types of structures are we talking about? Are we talking potential city structures? We can't speculate how long it may or may not be annexed into the city of Corvallis. We have to assume that at some point it will. So what types of structures might we see on a mixed-use commercial property?
So again, there's three different zoning designations that implement mixed-use commercial comp plan designation. And so there are general commercial, commercial mixed-use one and commercial mixed-use two. General commercial would be the least intensive of those three in terms of building scale. I think it's a 45-foot maximum height versus 35-foot or 30-foot maximum height in the R6 zone, which would be applied under the current comp plan designation. And again, there's no maximum lot coverage in any of the three zones that implement MUC. CMU two or CMU one would be the next step up. That allows up to a 45-foot as well, actually. So both of those same building height, 45 feet. CMU two allows up to a 75-foot building, so about six stories maximum. And in terms of uses, all three of those, or at least the two CMU zones are intended to be kind of pedestrian-oriented mixed-use zones. So they don't allow things like gas stations, drive-throughs, fleet storage, things like that. GC, general commercial, I believe, does allow some small amount of like fleet storage. It's intended to be kind of a little more on the edge of an industrial commercial zone. But again, doesn't allow gas stations or drive-throughs.
That's very helpful. And I'm impressed that you have that memo. And just a couple other clarifications. I've just been in situations where we've seen, you know, this kind of, again, these are nebulous terms for a lot of folks, and we look at CM1 news or CMU, excuse me, CMU1, CMU2 is general commercial. Would this allow for city infrastructure, water towers, cell towers? Any of those types of things in this scenario as well?
I'd have to take a look at the code. I know that attached wireless facilities are permitted, so attached to a building. I'm not, I don't think standalone is, don't quote me on that, but I don't think so. And then water towers, you said.
Or utilities.
Yeah. I'd have to pull up the code. Those would be considered major services and utilities in our code in terms of use type. I don't believe those are permitted in that zone. But I would have to double check.
And then my other, not related to that question, was it was mentioned that this property previously was flagged as a cleanup site. Do we know what remediation or mitigations have occurred? And is this property free of that? The concerns of contamination that were flagged previously? So I don't know the exact specifics on that. I know that if you ask our county council, you might cause a slight reaction there, since he was involved in in processing, you know, kind of getting that that taken care of. But to my knowledge, it's been, it was cleaned up to the point where the EQ and and the county were satisfied with with the status of the property and satisfied that it had been cleaned up sufficiently. There's a, there's a large case file somewhere in our. But that's not part of this current record or report or even the additional? No. No, only only the the documentation submitted by the applicant regarding the the contamination plume is in the link.
Mine's completely separate, so Commissioner wasn't, is it in the same vein?
Well, not really. It's it's more of an issue about water and waste.
So I'll ask mine real quick then. I spoke to somebody, I I always ask the procedural type of questions. And so I'm looking at the staff reports on page 21, and there looks like it's a joint motion related to the comprehensive plan amendments. But then on page 66 of 77, there's a separate one that's just of the Benton County Planning Commission related to the zone. And my understanding correctly, as a body, we will make one motion together on the, on the comprehensive plan. And then we'll need a second motion just from the Benton County side related to the zoning. Am I reading?
So I'll address that just prior to deliberations?
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. This is questions regarding water. Water has been an important issue, especially in the north part of the county. There have been issues related to whether water can sustain the the growth that's being requested. And so I was just curious that a- a- as much that I may have missed it in your report, and I apologize if I did, as to whether there are two wells, the the applicant says they're using the north well because of potential contamination from the south. But that that whatever future growth would occur there, that the water that's available there on the property would be sufficient to sustain that 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 use or whatever use may be applied to it in that commercial aspect. And then it's my understanding that currently waste is just treated as a, as a leach drain and not a, is it a septic leach or is it a just a drain field? It's, I saw a drain field, but I didn't see whether it was being dealt with with the septic stuff.
So as far as water goes, excuse me, sorry. The if there's a a change to a different use, that's a, if the property is re-zoned to urban commercial and it's still prior to it being annexed into the city limits of Corvallis. If a different commercial use is proposed for the property, we would evaluate it at that time to determine that there's adequate water to support that use. Until the property is annexed into the city of Corvallis, it would not be eligible for connection to the city water. Anything to add on that?
Nope.
Okay. As far as the sewer or waste dealing with those items for county purposes, there we don't have, unless unless it's a health hazard annexation to the city sewer services, or there's a county sewer service district, waste is disposed of through a septic system, so septic drain field. Yeah.
Any other wrap-up questions? Assistant Ms. Larry?
One question I do have, um, in certain commercial properties in the city, I'm not sure if this is only within city limits or in the urban fringe. On certain commercial properties, according to, you know, recent changes to state law, they can apply, they can build, people can build affordable housing units, that kind of thing. Would that apply on this property if it's or that require annexation? Or is it not, just not applicable at all?
So prior to annexation, let me just double-check this here. I'm looking at at our urban commercial zone right now. The only dwelling options in the urban commercial zone are one dwelling required for employer or employee for management or safeguarding of the commercial use. Or one manufactured dwelling in conjunction with an existing dwelling as a temporary use for the term of a hardship suffered by a resident or relative of the resident. So we don't have, as a conditional use, somebody could request just a dwelling not associated with the commercial use. But we don't have an option for additional accessory dwelling units in that zone.
I'm not really talking about regular use. I'm talking about sort of state-level override of existing zoning, like we've had in some of our neighborhood centers in Corvallis.
Would that apply to the county?
That wouldn't apply. That's only in the city.
Yeah, it's a city. Yeah.
Okay.
Any further wrap-up questions? I see none. And but I will check, since we've had additional testimony. Mr. Dodson, do you have any rebuttal from the applicant that you would like to submit? Thank you. So now I will confirm, are there any requests to hold the record open? I see none, so we can declare the record closed and enter deliberations. And to Commissioner Struthers' question earlier, there will eventually be three motions. So on page 21 of 77 of our packet, we have parallel motions. It's not a joint motion, it is parallel. So both the city will make a motion, and the county will make a motion to either recommend or not recommend the comprehensive plan amendment. And then within the county staff report on page 66 of 77, there is a Benton County-specific motion that will be entertained. So three in total. Little complex, but it's actually, I think, fairly straightforward. Our process within the county is to amend Robert rules slightly. And so we do not require a motion on the table for any commissioner to declare their sense of what they've heard, what testimony was compelling, where they stand on kind of the the issues. The intention is to streamline the motion-making. And so would any member of either the city of Corvallis or Benton County wish to make any sort of a statement prior to entertaining a motion? So personally, I I will say that I find that the deficit of commercially zoned property within the urban fringe compelling. And I believe that the highest and best use of this land is in a commercial vein rather than residential vein.
I would largely concur.
Commissioner Struthers?
I'll, I'll add with knowing that there's almost a 40-year history of the property being used, some used in some form of commercial. It is compelling that it meets, at least from the county's perspective, the need for, from the zoning, the zoning, there was more of the criteria in the zone for the the historical use of that property. So I feel like it meets that with being almost 40 years of some form of commercial use there. And then the the questions around, you know, the water, knowing that And then the, the questions around, you know, the water, knowing that the property stays within the county for the next few years or how long until it gets annexed in the city, knowing, hearing from staff that any additional development will have to go through additional testing to meet county standards. Like, so there, there are safeguards to protect that going forward, knowing that this property will be caught up to being what, what it should be if we approve it, approve it, or not recommend to our government bodies.
Right. And I was just going to add, Commissioner Fowler, that I think that both presentations were comprehensive. The packet was as comprehensive as I could expect. And I had to do due diligence because as Commissioner Bisco pointed out, we're not terribly versed in the Corvallis city code, the planning code. And so that was a bit of a challenge. I had to open up a few more websites. And so, and, and learned a few more things. I think that the overarching goal here to bring the property into a conforming use wherever we can is always a, I think also a plus, that we're able to manage our properties and our lands in a way that's consistent with the, the city and the county's visions and goals within its planning departments and planning agencies. And that that community input is provided as well is, 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 is an important one to meet. So. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, I'll defer to you to lead the city planning commission.
Well, if there's no other discussion, do you have a motion from the Corvallis planning commissioners?
Sure. I move that the city of Corvallis Planning Commission forwarded a recommendation to the Corvallis City Council to approve the requested comprehensive plan amendment CPA 2023-02. This request is described and discussed in attachment PCA of the staff report to both planning commissions. My motion is based upon the staff recommendations to the planning commissions and reasons articulated by both planning commissions and our deliberations.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Clark and a second by Commissioner Mayors. Any discussion or do you want to speak to your motion?
Oh, I agree with what everybody said. I mean, it seems like a slam dunk to put a, a property into the use that it's been already doing. I mean, it's just not rocket science to me.
Yeah, same. I mean, this is a good one to cut our teeth on in this process.
Before we move on to your vote or any objections behind the vote? Okay, hearing none, we can just do a voice vote, I guess. All those in favor of a motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Very good. And Ms. Mae Peace, did you catch the motion maker and the seconded? Thank you. Moving to the Benton County side, I see Commissioner Struthers ready to make a motion.
I move that the Benton County Planning Commission forwarded a recommendation to the Benton County Board of Commissioners to approve the requested comprehensive plan amendment CPA dash 2023 dash 02. This request is described and discussed in attachment PCA of the staff report to both commissions. My motion is based upon the staff recommendations to the planning commission and reasons articulated by the planning commission and its deliberations. Benton County, Benton County Planning Commission and its deliberations.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Fulford.
I'll second that.
We have a duly made and seconded motion. Any further deliberations or discussions prior to calling for the vote? Call for the vote then. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And did we catch Commissioner Cash?
You did not, but aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Then moving to the final motion, Commissioner Wilson.
I recommend approval. I move to recommend approval of the zoning map amendment requested in Benton County planning file LU 24-006 based on the findings and conclusions contained in the staff report or as modified at the public hearing.
Commissioner Bisco, seconds. Any further deliberations or discussion on duly made and seconded motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And once again, I'll confirm Commissioner Cash.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. These are the recommendations of the joint planning commissions. Thank you all for your participation. Moving on into our agenda, our two informational topics. And as was previously discussed, there will not be public input here. However, I will note that I know from a county standpoint, we've already received some input on the topic of the South Corvallis Area Plan Project. That input is currently in the process of being vetted and appropriately channeled to the appropriate audiences. And so that input is, is not available for us this evening, but that is being actively considered and channeled into the appropriate folks, either at the city or at the, at the county. So now I will turn it over to Ms. Johnson, I believe, for the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Fowler. And thank you, commissioners of county and city. This is just an overview of the South Corvallis Area Planning Project. For both of you, we thought it would be a good opportunity to be able to get all of you in the same room together, given that there are things that pertain to both county planning or county lands, so areas outside of the city limits and inside the, the urban fringe, as well as areas within the city. So I'm not going to belabor a lot of super specific ones and try to keep it kind of broad so that we're not belaboring one or the other. But just for a little bit of an overview, back in 2016, the city completed the Imagine Corvallis 2040 Vision. That's a beautiful booklet that you can find online or at City Hall or other locations. It lists the stated vision of what Corvallis will look like for 2040. And after the adoption of that too, we went through our comprehensive plan to ensure that our policies in the comprehensive plan conform to what the community has said its vision is for Corvallis moving into the future. Also following that, we did conduct the Buildable Lands Inventory that, that Ryan was talking about, that kind of gives us the landscape of needs for the community, looking out over a 20 year timeframe in terms of types of land and population projections over that timeframe. And then following that, in 2019, the city of Corvallis Strategic Operational Plan was created and part of the Strategic Operational Plan relates specifically to planning and back to the planning related vision statements. And specifically calls for the city to do specific area plans based on six kind of geo identified areas throughout Corvallis so that over a span of, say, 15 years, we're, we're taking a more detailed look at each of the neighborhoods or kind of communities inside Corvallis and inside the urban growth boundary of Corvallis to make sure that we're kind of tweaking things and getting it right. So that's where it comes to that question about making legislative changes to the map in, in in response to the data that we, that we have with respect to needed lands or where populations are going or where needs are cropping up across the community. So South Corvallis was steady area A within that geographical mapping that we use for that project. And we were, we were directed in 2000, oh, I want to say 19, yeah, 19, with the adoption of this to begin the process of conducting a, a specific area plan for South Corvallis. So during that time, as I mentioned, all these plans kind of came out in, in 2020. So during 2019, we started putting together a advisory work group and then a staff technical advisory committee that would kind of organize that. We as planners started organizing what the thing was going to, going to look like, laid out our timelines and everything. And then on February 28th of 2020, we conducted our first kickoff event for that project. And then two weeks later, we were all back in our homes. And so we did try to kind of conduct some, some outreach over that time period. I'll talk about that a little bit in a moment, but just to sort of put a, put a point on it. This has been sort of a project of little lurches and pauses along the way, dealing with a multitude of different issues across the state and globally. Okay, so moving on in terms of community outreach, every five years, the community does a community land use questionnaire. And that asks people throughout the community where there are needs within, within their neighborhoods, again, within the six study areas in terms of where do you think new housing should go? Where do you think we need apartments? Where do you think we need industrial lands, hotels? It runs the gamut. And then we compare those every five years as we get that new data in. And we sort of see those trends. And so you probably can't see it very well on this, but those lines on that vertical bar chart there show for area A students, the things that they, or for area A residents, the things that they would really like to see more of in South Corvallis and the things that they would like to see a lot less of in South Corvallis. We also compare that data to respondents who reside outside of that area to be able to sort of tease out, you know, what do neighbors think versus what do people who don't live in this direct neighborhood, but maybe commute there, think? Or, you know, in some cases, where does, where do other neighborhoods think that all the students should go? Is one kind of anecdotal thing that we, that we see frequently. So out of that community outreach, we, we received some input about what community members have said they want to see in their, in their neighborhoods. During that kickoff in 2020 for this project, we did have a project introduction questionnaire that asked some pretty basic questions of the South Corvallis community. It was open to others, but specifically sort of trended towards South Corvallis about what they like and what they don't like about the community, what they'd see more, like to see more of and less of. Again, in 2022, we conducted that community land use questionnaire again so that we can see where the trend lines are going there. Also coming down the pipeline in 2021, 2022, as we're emerging from COVID, the state handed down a whole lot of affordable housing legislation. And so, and actually concurrent with that, we lost almost half of our staffing in our office. And so we kind of, you know, backed off some of our more long range plans and started working on the state mandated changes and things like that. But during that time also, we did maintain the departmental advisory work group and the technical advisory committee who took all of the data that we'd received over these previous community outreach events and questionnaires and things like that. And kind of distilled down all of that data to see what community members were saying. Out of that process, the first proposed land use scenario was created. And the folks involved in that, I should say, were our planning commissioner, two city counselors and two community neighbor, the South Corvallis neighbors, as well as South Corvallis property owners outside of city limits and inside the urban fringe. So now here we are at the end of 2024, we rolled out the webpage that includes some interactive opportunities there as well as conducted the open house event as sort of a reintroduction of this project back to the community after sort of this fits and starts sort of, sort of scenario. Okay. I did note legislative changes. There are some things that the legislature has brought to us that significantly impact the landscape of how we envision our neighborhoods in South Corvallis and throughout the state. So the ones that we're highlighting here are middle housing that eliminates single family zoning in all, in all residential zones. So it calls for a greater variety of housing to be available in any zone throughout the community. And it also provides more flexibility for land divisions and then gives benefits like density bonuses and things like that for subsidized affordable housing projects. House Bill 1537, that is the one that allowed any, any recognized sort of capital A affordable housing project that developer to come in and develop affordable housing on any type of zoned land, right? So commercial, some industrial, public institutional, and any residential, professional office, et cetera, without any changes to the zone or zoning code. So they can just come and build that capital A affordable housing on any of those lands. And we saw that occur in South Corvallis at the corner of Midvale and River Green right earlier this year with an affordable housing project that went, went in on property that was zoned CMU1. So commercial mixed use one. And then finally, another highlight, climate friendly and equitable communities legislation spurred the elimination of minimum parking requirements throughout the community in Corvallis. And so while we do have some parking maximums in certain zones, minimum parking requirements have been eliminated through our land development code. Okay. So taking into account sort of the parameters that we're dealing with in terms of middle housing legislation, what the community has said in these, in these outreach opportunities over the past five to seven years, as well as just kind of general planning principles that were applied by the department, departmental advisory work group and the technical advisory committee. Those groups got together and developed what we're calling land use scenario one. So this is sort of the starting point for the conversation in the community about, okay, these are the things you said, we're going to put these on a map in certain colors and see what the community thinks about it. Okay, so this is the north segment. This includes basically from the Mary's River Bridge down to Alexander School. So that would be Park on the south. Okay. In its current existence, we've got kind of a smattering of sort of, you know, one and maybe two story commercial, linear commercial along that portion of that segment. To the rear of that includes what we call mixed use employment zone, which is kind of a funky zone that was envisioned by the community about 30 years ago that was intended to sort of allow for widget makers or other small industrial users to, to live above their workshops and things like that. It was spread throughout the community and has failed fairly spectacular in terms of its performance over the years. And so with the middle housing project, actually, was it with middle housing? Or one of our projects. Anyway, it was, yes, I mean, yeah. It was eliminated or proposed to be eliminated by council policy in our, in our comprehensive plan. So we know that that's going away. And so every time we kind of touch an area in a legislative process, we're looking for, okay, what is appropriate there? What would we envision there? And so in this case, so that's basically most of that. There is area in the urban fringe over there. That's Allen Street to the very west. There's a lot of open space there adjacent to the Mary's River and a little strip of low density residential there along Allen Street. But that's kind of all that we've got in that particular photo that is within the urban fringe. So we've got kind of a mixture of industrial, some kind of low intensity commercial along this corridor. What we can, what we consistently heard from community members within, specific to this area and sort of throughout, actually, South Corvallis as a whole is, we'd like to have something that looks like an extension of downtown. We'd like shops stacked mixed use, you know, the ability to walk to employment, walk to shops. We looked at those kind of comments and, and really sort of the desire for a more vibrant sort of pedestrian area. And, and the group decided, okay, why, why don't we look at creating all of that as sort of an extra, like an extension of downtown, if you will. So like cross the bridge and you've got what sort of looks like downtown with a mix of, you know, two to maybe five story buildings with some apartments or other housing above shops. The opportunity to blend office uses, other commercial uses and goods and services and things like that. With the notion that it is literally, you know, half a mile from downtown, the transit center, it's on a transit line and it's less than a mile from campus. So it seemed like a really good fit for something like that. So central business, commercial, as you go down, we, we wanted to concentrate that and then sort of reduce the intensity of that as you go down the corridor a little bit more. And so there's right there at the, at the Mill Race, the proposal. The proposal to sort of bump that down to that CME2. So what Ryan was talking about 45 feet instead of 75 feet, for example. And then this brown sort of off of those areas, that signifies mixed use residential. So that is a comp plan designation that allows for what it sounds like predominantly residential uses of medium to medium high density residential with the opportunity to provide say laundromats, you know, in addition to housing or a little corner coffee shop or things like that. So if people wanted to sort of blend that difference between the, you know, higher intensity commercial uses into the neighborhood, there could be instead of a really big line there between them, sort of blend those across. And then these photos show the sort of mixed use commercial and residential mixed use examples in other places throughout the state and United States. So it's kind of garden apartments to sort of four over ones or five over ones, that kind of thing. Okay, for the middle section, a lot of this is fairly well developed. As I mentioned before, with middle housing, RS6 can already develop up to fourplexes now with middle housing. They can, it can be developed up to 24 units per acre. If it's in the form of townhomes or cottage clusters, there's a lot of different variety of now what we would consider density as well as variety of housing types that can be introduced into neighborhoods. In the urban fringe area of this area, so the area just west of Wake Robin, well, west of the railroad tracks on Wake Robin and then south of Wake Robin, that's an industrial area. It also, a portion of that is on our land use maps that so that that kind of, so the pink that we propose to turn to brown. That's an area that has quite a bit of ag OS and that's a really restricted sort of open space zone that doesn't really allow for much of anything in that location. Interestingly, Toby and I had a project a few years ago where I was sort of a co-council, I guess, for lack of a better word on it because there was a proposed tower that was going to be built on that property. And because our zoning on that property is COS, I had to come and say, well, okay, you know, and if this was annexed into the city, that would not be a permitted use. And, you know, even in the COS zone, egoist zone, you're not even allowed to build the pad that that tower goes on. And so that is to point out that as we go through a procedural legislative process in the future, we're going to need to work together pretty closely between the city and the county to reconcile conflicts in our zoning or conflicts in our comprehensive plan that, that at least lessen the likelihood that someone has assurances under county, but, but obviously something's going to happen in the city that could cause that to be a non-compliant use. So that's a point on that. So we did propose to change a little bit of that back into what would be RS12, which is what it's adjacent to within city limits with the notion that that is private property. It is not city owned. And, and so when we looked at it and put our natural features overlay maps on it, we noted that other than a small bit of local wetlands that would have to remain undisturbed, the rest of it actually didn't have any natural features or natural hazards on it. And we thought, why not give that flexibility back to that property owner? And so that's what this phase one scenario shows is giving some of those sort of property development entitlements back to that property owner. And then to the south of that, we're also involved in a project that would really redo our industrial zones. Those zones are older than some people in this room. They don't, they don't accurately reflect what our current employment and industrial landscape looks like in this, in the state, in this community. And so we're trying to refresh those and our economic development office is working right now on that. And so what we propose as we go down the corridor is, is to provide a spectrum of availability of industrial and unemployment uses that sort of correlate better with the adjacent uses. So if they're close to like, for example, right here, they're close to, you can't see my finger, can you? She's running the show over there. So in areas where they're close to RS20, for example, we would look at that as being an opportunity for kind of a mix of maybe medical centers or dental specialists, you know, those kinds of things. Light industrial production kind of stuff that would not be in conflict or out of compatibility with those residential uses. And then I know that there are a number of people in this room who are interested in a portion of the other side of on, along Crystal Lake. And so I'm not going to ignore that. We're going to talk about that right now. When we talk about planning principles applied to certain locations within the community and what community members want to be close to. One of the principles is that that higher density should be located close to transit lines and close to open space features and to, you know, within close proximity to green space areas because we know that people live, who live in smaller, higher density residential don't often have things like a backyard with a swing set. And so providing those assets close to those people is a good planning principle. To that end, the work group decided to float the idea of slightly increasing the zoning along this stretch that is currently within county, although some of it has been brought into the city with, with annexations over time. It's on a strip that's intended to be a neighborhood collector. So it's intended to provide an alternative sort of artery for people on the west or on the east side of the highway so they don't have to get immediately onto the highway to move north for every trip that they take. And so for that reason, the, the, the scenario one played with the idea of putting RS9, so medium density residential, so think Willamette Landing, for example, along with RS12. And RS12 is actually what Coho just to the north of this is is zoned as. So RS12 medium high density residential, that allows for a mixture of smaller, you know, two maximum three story collections of housing. It usually manifests in kind of quads, quadplexes, eightplexes and things like that. We were thinking about something akin to Coho that could go on those properties if those properties were ever annexed into the city. And then moving further south along that portion, we did toy with the idea of putting RME12 at right at the corner of Goodnight and the entrance to Willamette with the idea that having medium, medium high density residential in that location could put people close to parks and also allow for the opportunity for something like a coffee shop or ice cream shop, right, for the summer months, things like that. So there are concerns about that. We have heard those concerns and we will be working with the community to respond to those concerns. But the, but I wanted everybody to hear the planning principles that went behind the ideas that the work group put forward on these first maps. Okay. Southern segment, there's really not a lot of change here, but this is what the county folks are probably going to be the most interested in. So Benton County Commissioners on the west side, you will see some very colorful changes along that area. That's all basically general industrial with little spots of that previously mentioned soon to be removed MUE zone and then a similarly ineffectual LIO zone, limited industrial office zone. That has also been found to be a non-starter. It's too specific. We're being way too prescriptive with who goes where and what property lines they can cross. And instead of that, what has been proposed is change all of that to either limited industrial or general industrial. And that's depicted here in the purple versus the gray. In reality, it probably would all be comprehensive plan designation of general industrial with this now being developed spectrum of industrial zones that, that our EDO is working on. So industrial one would be that like commercial blend industrial, industrial two would be business parks, you know, tech facilities. And industrial three would be the locations where you would see the more traditional industrial type users. And then on the west side, there's a slight change to this from, from the previous one. Again, way less prescriptive in terms of detailing out each individual zone at each spot. We made the commercial mixed use nodes a little bit larger and we reduced the number of them along the corridor. So instead of dissipating the, that commercial focus, we, we tried to focus it in and then we changed that to sort of focus into that new neighborhood rather than a strip along the highway. We thought that was better in terms of walkability for pedestrians and access and safety for the neighborhood. Again, we introduced that residential mixed use or mixed use residential that would be medium, high to high density residential. There around those nodes going over to a new neighborhood collector that is planned in the TSP. And then the last change we made here was to bump the zone from RS6 to RS9. And that's really just recognizing that there is basically a nil difference between RS6 and RS9 now today under middle housing. So with sort of our density out, out the window because of middle housing, we looked at the difference between our low density and our medium density zones. And what we found was there's literally a difference of five foot setback versus 15 foot yard setback in the backyard between RS9 and RS6. And you can allow for smaller lot sizes in RS9. Those are minimums, right? So really the sweet spot in terms of getting a lot of variety of lot sizes, housing types and things like that, that RS9 kind of gets at all of those things. It does. I left the airport off of that because that's unpublic and institutional. But yeah, so they're on the, on the west side. Oh, I changed, but you didn't, sorry. Yeah. So there on the west side, there's kind of that little swoop. That's the end of the urban growth boundary. Okay. So I wanted to show you two, and I'll try to move quick through this. This is the scenario when land use, transportation, land use and transportation. And I thought it was important to both blow up these photos and also show you show you the relationship between future transportation and the land use, right? So you can see here on this one, there are a number of neighborhood bikeways. There's pathways that are existing and proposed. There's little local street connections that are proposed to sort of make block perimeter to increase walkability, you know, to allow for circulation off the highway within these developed areas. That occurs predominantly through development is part of our land development code to allow for walkability, rideability and just general circulation without getting to an arterial for all of your trips. And then we do also have a number of multi-use paths in this area, not the least of which is the new Oregon 99 facility plan that goes straight down the highway. But in addition to that, we've got the planned Avery Tunisen path that is in scope of work currently for, for design review. That's a 30% design review. Moving down in the corridor, we tried to look for opportunities. Again, these will likely occur with development. The difficulty with having nothing kind of at least on pencil is that when you get to a development plan, we are often hamstrung by the will of the developer and the confines of the land development code. And unless we've got something in a plan that says we really need a local street extension somewhere in this location, it's nearly impossible for us to get that improvement. So this shows some ways that we can increase navigability within, on both sides of the highway and allow for greater movement of people in all forms of transportation within that area. Briefly, there on the west side, south of Goodnight, that is a new neighborhood collector that will be developed with future development of that high density residential piece of property there. And then lastly, in the south, we have a network of future neighborhood collectors that are noted in the transportation system plan. As we were looking at this as a work group, as a, as a tech advisory committee, we noticed that there are a couple of things that we really want to maybe subject to a, to a little bit deeper analysis here. One, first on the east side, there is a local or a neighborhood collector extending from River Green that we noted really should be extending from Midvale because that's where the collector is. And so we would propose to shift that over and sort of run that collector kind of with development or with the zoning designations over to the parks down that that corridor of Parkway on, in that new neighborhood there on the east side. And then on the west side, we've got a neighborhood collector and also that Tunisen Trail, both of which have frustrated some attempts at industrial development in this area because of the conflicts that are inherent to having a multi-use path for bicyclists right next to an active rail line as well as bisecting potential industrial lands with a neighborhood collector that frustrates their ability to to develop large square footage facilities and things like that. And so we want to look at those two. Take, take a look at some trip generation analysis and determine whether or not that's the best place for those facilities to go. And then also consider the redundancy of additional bike trails that are planned in the future through parks and rec, as well as through public works in this area and how we can maximize our investments in alternative transportation while removing conflicts. In terms of community participation, we do have this website that is currently up and live. It has access to the South Corvallis Story Map, which is an interactive map that goes through this corridor much in greater detail than I have tonight and talks about sort of the existing conditions and desired outcomes and then outline considerations. Has a whole bunch of different resources there, including access to all of the community outreach. Responses that we received over the years up until this last open house. And then there's the story map. So you can click on those little numbers and they move along and tell that story. At the bottom of that sheet, as well as on the webpage, there is a community participation survey that asked some fairly simple questions. We didn't want people to be there on their phones too long, kept working on those to try to, to get some early input on this. That survey and questionnaire will remain up at least through the end of this year and we will work with our PIO and other organizations to push that back out in the community more after the holidays have calmed down and then and continue to gather those survey responses and other responses from the community. We will be standing up a robust engagement process with community members, interested parties, partner organizations. After the holidays, after the first of the year, make refinements based on the input in addition to analysis and data such as trips and utilities and stormwater and all of those types of data that we need to put into this whole mosaic to figure out what, what it's looking like. We'll plan monthly or maybe bimonthly meetings with the departmental advisory, advisory work group, as well as with the technical advisory committee. Conduct engagement on the refinements to that, then conduct engagement on the refinements to the refinements. Eventually come up with a draft plan. Inevitably label something else a final draft plan. Cause that's how those go before finally arriving at the public adoption process, which again includes city and county, county commissioners, city council, county commissioners, and then subsequent land use cases, cases and master plan amendments. So it's a huge project. We're just getting started. Wanted to bring you all sort of up to date on this and respond to any questions that you may have.
Um, what does the timeline look like for this project? I know it's if we're still at early stages, but like, what is the timeline, especially the timeline for what opportunities people have to provide public input?
So we uh, we endeavor to have opportunities for public input up on the webpage at all times and try to work with our PIO to push those out to social media and other things. I have a, it's getting larger every day, interested parties list that we can push things out to as well to make sure that people are getting that in their mailboxes. And then um, we also like to do things like um, have have a station at the farmer's market, for example, or other community events that are going on. Stand something up at the library from time to time, those types of things. And then over the course of of this coming year, we'll be, you know, do doing, you know, stake stakeholder meetings, um, neighborhood associations. Um, I in the past have done things with Lincoln School PTA because that's kind of a focus spot for that community. And that's and that sort of thing. Um, in terms of months, it depends on the refinements and things like that, but we'll we'll be working on this for probably most of twenty twenty-five, I would imagine, yeah.
Miss Sheeps?
For the benefit um, of our county residents, so a lot of them are here as well. Do you mind just mentioning some of these preliminary steps and kind of formalizing our planning relationship as we move forward? Uh, for example, um, we'd be adding a county planner.
Yes, so Webster Slater, who's here tonight, uh, will be joining our technical advisory committee. And so um, we'll be happy to have him on that or on the department advisory. I can't remember which one we decided on, but um, so and we'll be working more closely there in the future too. And so um, that will be a huge help in terms of getting the county's perspective on things as well as um, engaging with the county planning commission if things come up that we need a quick check in on.
Thank you for that update. We we appreciate it. Ms. Laird.
Oh, can you remind everyone one more time how we can get to that survey?
I sure can. Um, if you go to the city of Corvallis, um, planning division page, on the very front page of or yeah, on the very front page, if you scroll down that page, you'll see South Corvallis area plan. It's a little picture.
Yes. How do you that? What pages in your um, presentation?
Uh, twelve.
If you just straight up Google Corvallis south area, south Corvallis area plan, you'll find.
Yeah, it comes up pretty readily.
It's like right at the top.
That's what it looks like.
This is what the webpage looks like. So it it is hosted under community development and under planning division. Um, super easy to navigate to. You can put it in our search engine on our webpage as well.
Okay, yeah, it's the top. It's the top Google listing when you list.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. And uh, why don't we take, because I suspect a number of our audience, this was their primary interest. So why why don't we take a brief break, let some people transition out, and then we'll reconvene in no more than ten minutes and uh, begin again with our comprehensive plan and development code updates from the county. Ten minute break. Hope Shannon isn't insulted by losing the audience. But you, but you have a very rapt and attentive audience that remains. Uh, and so we'll move to the next uh, agenda item. And Ms. Bush is joining us remotely, and so we'll turn it over to Ms. Bush.
All righty. Thank you so much. Let's do a mic check here first. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, nice to see most of you again and nice to meet the rest of you. Um, my name is Shannon Bush. I am the program coordinator in the Benton County Community Development Department. Um, Amanda and I are going to try to be in sync with these slides tonight, so I'll do my best here. Um, I am joining you to just provide kind of some project updates for two kind of concurrent projects that the county is working on right now. Um, it's the comprehensive plan update as well as the development code. So I split those up into kind of two overviews to talk you through tonight. Um, I'm going to try to keep this under ten or fifteen minutes, so get out of here sooner than later, uh, just depending on how many questions or commentary um, that we want to get into at the end. So next slide, please, Amanda. Um, so I just want to start with a kind of a refresher for both of both of these projects and provide this information for the outset um, for the city planning commission here. Um, so our comprehensive plan, I'm calling it a comprehensive community plan to help people kind of contextualize a little bit better what it is that we're doing here. Um, the project is scoped over um, probably a two, possibly three phase project. We anticipate up to five years. Uh, hopefully it'll be on the low end, but really depends on how things go. We're currently in phase one. Um, that phase one will conclude in May twenty twenty-five, and it is funded by a fifty thousand dollar DLCD technical assistance grant. So that is what has uh, kind of gotten us into this kickoff phase. Um, and phase one includes three tasks outlined here. Uh, task one is designing an inclusive outreach plan. We'll talk through that a little bit more in a second. Task two is developing a regional vision for collaborative resilience, um, which is AKA a work plan that DLCD will need to approve for us. And task three is executing at the at the kind of completion of our I O P, a equity inclusion self-assessment. Next slide, please. All right, so talking you through some status updates here. So as far as designing the inclusive outreach plan, one thing I want to make really clear for you all tonight is that, again, this is like a pre-planning phase, kind of a a plan to do the plan, right? Um, so we want to be really intentional about doing um, a good job with outreach and communication and engagement with the community. So that's why we're doing this kind of slowly and strategically, to make sure we are not kind of putting the cart before the horse. So we've allocated ten thousand dollars to this just kind of designing or creating this I O P for short. Um, we're in the editing phase of that right now, so our county planning commission has seen that draft document, I think, last month, so just a couple of weeks ago. Um, and it's going to go through some iterations, basically with our subcommittee. We'll be meeting, uh, there's two folks here, Greg Hayman and Andrew Struthers. We'll be meeting on that next week to talk through some of the details a bit further about the I O P recommendations um, as well as a internal county group known as uh, HIAC, I call it for short, the Health in All Actions Committee. So that's a committee of about twenty to thirty folks um, that have helped us develop this project thus far. The sort of um, high priority populations, as we're calling them. Um, and then finally, uh, a C P A G will also help us to vet that I O P. All of this is really just for the sake of ensuring that we are, again, just very intentional about our outreach and where we go, how we do it, what we're trying to accomplish, um, so that in the end, we can feel very confident that we did a good job. So um, we will be getting a ten thousand dollar reimbursement for that kind of work by DLCD at the end of this year, most likely. Um, I'm very pleased to tell you, it looks like we'll be getting another ten to twenty thousand dollars through different county programs to help further support this work. Um, this is a huge win for us. It's going to help support um, a county web presence. So we're in the final kind of stages of getting that contract amended this week and signed. So be look kind of on the lookout for that. I'll hopefully be able to share updates with you next month, once that's all squared away. Um, and to further our outreach effort. So of course, the big challenge with doing inclusive outreach or any kind of outreach is it takes time and resources um, and people power to pull it off. So the hope is that additional ten thousand dollars from the county equity committee will help us to kind of even further um, our outreach capacity. Uh, finally, um, this is another one of our kind of tasks here is assembling a C P A G, we're calling it, so a comp plan advisory group. Those meetings will be starting in uh, January twenty twenty-five. There will be two or three of them. Um, and the members that we are selecting for that are really intended to be representatives of those high priority populations. So the idea here is identify your high priority populations and by those, it's typically the underrepresented groups. So rather than people who tend to show up at meetings, we try to identify those who do not. And how do we um, get to them? How do we get them to participate in a meaningful way in this type of project? Um, so one of the ways that we're looking to do that is to seek out representatives of those groups and get them to participate in our C P A G, to help kind of be advocates for the project to their communities. So that C P A G uh, group will be meeting first in January. Patriot and I are kind of just about to start outreach to them this month. Um, we anticipate might be around a dozen or so people uh, in the end. So then task two, that's kind of what we'll be starting on, probably also in in January, I would guess, um, is basically implementing that I O P that we've developed. So using all of those different strategies for outreach, we begin to develop this regional vision. So I know that that's kind of wordy, but it's basically um, defining the DLCD approved work plan. It's capturing priorities and understanding what we really need to focus on in this comp plan update. Um, the C P A G will assist us with that. Um, and just kind of getting us started, I would say. And the idea is that they'd be able to help us again with those outreach and engagement efforts with uh, the priority populations that they represent. Um, finally, task three is is unfunded as far as the DLCD uh, grant goes. Um, but it's not a huge ask. It's basically assessing how did we do um, with our kind of inclusive outreach plan? Were we successful? Uh, who did we miss? Why? Any lessons learned? Things we would do differently next time? All right, Amanda, next slide, please. So um, coming up next, we're basically right there at that start of task two, um, developing the regional vision. So uh, as I mentioned, we're going to be uh, kind of starting that initial outreach to C P A G members, those prospective attendees uh, this month, inviting them to a meeting kickoff in January. Um, here's the topic that we've kind of identified for that C P A G meeting in January. Identifying drivers of change and potential impacts. So Cascadia Partners is our um, consultant. They're going to be helping to facilitate these C P A G meetings with us. Um, and it's essentially, again, it's defining and focusing in on the areas for the work plan. So there are nineteen total statewide land use planning goals, fourteen of them applied to Benton County. The idea is of those fourteen, where do we need to focus our efforts most? So you know, it's, we might not be able to cover the entire universe of all of those topic areas, but what are most important to people? So that's what they're going to help us do is like those drivers of change and what are the second wave robust strategies um, to affect change within those issue areas. So those C P A G meetings will be in the spring um, of twenty twenty-five. Again, we have to finish this kind of uh, three task effort by May of twenty twenty-five, so that's our timeline for this. And then with uh, lots of luck, I hope, and hard work, we'll be able to start uh, phase two of this project in summer of twenty twenty-five. So that is, of course, going to be pending um, funding from both Benton County to keep us going and uh, DLCD again for probably a second uh, technical assistance grant, which we're looking good as far as that goes. But it's a process to uh, kind of secure the next phase. So um, I can either, I'll just continue and do the development code, and then we can do questions and comments at the end if that works for folks. All right, so I just spoke about the comprehensive plan. I know this is kind of confusing, but these two projects do kind of go hand in hand. There's fairly parallel. Um, this next project update I'm going to talk about is for our development code. And next slide, please. Okay, so very similar to the comp plan update, it's also multi-phase over approximately the same timeline. That's because, again, it has to run parallel to the comprehensive plan update in that we can't make most of the changes, uh, we can't implement um, code level policy changes until the comprehensive plan is done. So that's, and I'll talk about that further here, but that is kind of the reason why it's very kind of much mirroring um, the comp plan. So we're currently in phase one as well for the uh, audit. Um, this focus on phase one is really about conformity with state legislative updates and really just focusing on administrative issues. So things like scripters, errors, things that are non-policy related. Anything that's policy related is really going to be pushed to a future phase um, because the idea is that should come out of the comprehensive plan and kind of be community driven, not community development, department driven. Phase one is funded by a seventy-five thousand dollar C I P investment from the county. Um, it aligns with our county budget, so it concludes in June of twenty twenty-five. Um, so very similar timeline. And again, three tasks. Um, project kickoff is pretty simple. It's just essentially an audit by our consultants that are helping us review everything and kind of get up to speed. Um, task two is the in-depth code review and initial code updates. That's kind of where we're at now. Talk further about it in the next slide. And task three is code refinements, review and adoption. So it's kind of going through the whole legal process. Next slide, please, Amanda. So status updates on the task. Can I already talk about what task one is? Um, it's pretty simple, just, you know, project management things. Task two, um, where we're at now, kind of toward the very end. Um, so what's kind of occurred over the last couple of months? The county compiled and provided a full list of relevant state legislative updates, which we got from DLCD and AOC, um, as well as county ordinances dating back to two thousand nine. We gave those to the consultant to say, here's what we know has happened um, that we want to do like the audit in relation to what these legislative changes are, like what what have we missed? What do we need to focus our energies on in this administrative piece? So um, following that kind of rather extensive list, it was nearly fifty, I think is where we wound uh, wound up. County staff then reviewed and prioritized those legislative updates um, to narrow the focus of phase one so that we were, again, just making sure we're talking about administrative issues. Um, kind of the low hanging fruit, so to speak, uh, not getting into policy level things that we are deferring to a later phase. Um, again, that will, that will occur following complent adoption to implement complent policies. So uh, recently, M I G provided us um, preliminary phasing, so how we're kind of move forward, um, a draft audit summary of the different issues that they've kind of found um, in their audit and some embedded comments on our code that we are working through now. Um, again, this is something that I'll be speaking with the subcommittee about next week um, in a little bit more detail. And now we're kind of just in the process of iterating um, with county staff and M I G to work through these um, again, solely administrative issues uh, with the code. So some of those are things like definitions, um, references that are uh, referring to the wrong um, referring back to the wrong piece of the code, things like that. Um, and a few things that are uh, bigger but statutorily required. So task three, um, code refinements, review and adoption. That is just, again, the process of like going through the hearings. Uh, M I G will help walk um, the county and planning commission through some of that, through workshops, when we get into more of the the meat of it. So anticipate that might be around February or March, possibly, my best guess for right now. Next slide, please. And then what's coming up next for this project? So again, we're at kind of task two and three right now. All of these tasks eventually kind of end up merging. Um, need to be complete at June twenty twenty-five. Future phases of the development code update will follow um, adoption of the comp plan changes. So depending on when the comprehensive plan chapters get adopted, that's when we'll be able to move into those uh, kind of parallel um, code adoption phases. Best guess might be around twenty-seven, hard to say. Um, and then what else? Uh, yeah, and just kind of a reminder. So the idea is that those code up. those code updates implement the complan goals, objectives, policies and land use designations that come out of the comprehensive planning process. So to be determined kind of where we land with that. And the final slide is just kind of the informal opening for Q and A if anybody would like to pose anything or comments, questions.
I think at the beginning, you said you were calling it the comprehensive community plan?
Yeah, anecdotally, I'm trying it out.
Is that what you're going to be calling it now or not?
Well, I'm not. There's a delay. You you like it? I think I heard.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Yeah, I've just found through just kind of informal dialogue with folks that when we say comprehensive plan, they don't really know what it's referring to. So I'm trying it on for size and seeing if I add in the word community, if that helps to clarify what type of plan it is that we're talking about. So I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, I just think that's a very good example of the public doesn't always know our lingo.
All right. Yeah, exactly.
Something that, you know, something that I just really appreciate your that is just really helpful to me.
But looks like Sarah online has a question.
I, excuse me, sorry, folks. I don't have your slides in my notes that were sent to me. Would it be possible to get those?
Absolutely. I can actually probably ask Amanda even to send them your way now or right after the meeting for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ms. Bush? I might mention on for our Corvallis partners that Benton County Planning Commission bylaws permit us to stand up subcommittees. And so we have formed two subcommittees, one under the leadership of Commissioner Fulford on affordable housing. And the second under the leadership of Vice Chair Hayman, who's participating remotely and Commissioner Struthers on what we call it all things code. And so kind of the working relationship we have with this project is led by Commissioners Hayman and Struthers. So the the detailed work can be done, you know, outside of engaging the entire planning commission, but bringing it back on a regular basis for discussion and so forth within the planning commission. Thank you again, Ms. Bush. Appreciate it. And my apologies to our city partners here. We have just one piece of administrative business from the county, which is to approve our minutes from November nineteenth. I will note that we have handed out a revised set of minutes and hard copy from those that were distributed in the package. And this stems from the discussion we've had on that balance between how comprehensive is our minute recording compared to essentially the required elements of of minutes? And so we revise these to be consistent with our strategy of essentially having minutes reflect the table of contents, since we have the complete session recorded, the minutes are a table of contents as well as a faithful recording of any decisions made. And last meeting, we didn't have any decisions, so those weren't reported. So what you have in front of you is the revised minutes. I'll note that the elements in red. Ms. Makepeace provided these to me and I made my changes in track changes. So that's what the red is. Those are my proposed changes in the track changes format. And so are there any edits, amendments or additional inclusion for the minutes? Commissioner Colford?
Yes, on item number four, planning commissioners' staff notes. Affordable housing subcommittee, I'd like to maybe put in instead of just affordable, put affordable and workforce housing or even regional housing. Or qualification, which would if they workforce or it should be regional.
Regional.
Yeah, affordable is more of a Corvallis.
Any other mess? Commissioner Bisco?
Just a question of clarification. So this is about half of the minutes that we were given and provided with. I just want to check. So our records retention laws requires us to keep our minutes in perpetuity. What is our requirements for Benton County for our recordings for our meetings?
Miss Sheets, do you know the answer to that?
The current policy is that we keep them in perpetuity as well. They're pending platform changes. Disrupt technology. There's been some of that in the last five years. So that's the current.
Entertain a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. You have a duly made and seconded motion to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And I'll check in explicitly with Sarah, because I don't see her right now.
Aye, sorry. My camera, I can't get my camera to turn on.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you. Finally, any items from community development? I know the curious are wondering, now that it is December three, has the county deemed the Republic Services application complete?
No.
Meaning incomplete or just not made a determination?
Undetermined.
Okay. Very, very well. Any items from the either planning commission?
But thank you for having us.
Yes, thank you, Katniss. You're lovely.
Good. Well, we appreciate you coming in our direction and I think we had a fruitful discussion around the required recommendations that we are to make and it was a pleasure to meet you all. With that, we are adjourned.